Lunsman.
Present.
Rife.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
Reinbold.
Present.
Langer.
Present.
Rux.
Present.
Mayor Shawman.
Present, please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under our God indivisible with liberty and justice in all. First order of business will be to approve last week's minutes for the council meeting of October 13th. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Rux and a second from Councilman Lunsman. Does anyone have any questions or changes on those minutes? If it's all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion does carry. The minutes are approved. We've got no one signed up here today for open court, so we'll move along to old business. We've got an item, Ordinance 201002, Amending Chapter Two Administration of the City Code Regarding Meetings of the Council and City Board's Possible Second Reading and Final Adoption of That Ordinance. Last week it was carried by city manager and city attorney. Have you gentlemen got anything to add to the discussion here?
I do not. I think we went through it thoroughly last week.
I would add, Mayor Shawman, that if the ordinance is finally adopted tonight, it would be published later this week, it looks like its effective date would be probably around the neighborhood of November 12th, which means that the first meeting of the council under this ordinance, if adopted tonight, would be on November 16th, 20th. That would be then the third, fourth, so you'd have the third and the fourth meetings, and then you'd actually skip, I think, then a fifth, if that calendar is correct, which I'm sure it is. Looks like you would not have a meeting on the 30th. Again, that's if the ordinance is adopted tonight without change.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Move to approve. Second.
Got a motion to approve the second reading of this ordinance by Councilman Johnson and a second by Councilman Reinbold. Carl?
May I make a comment, Mayor?
Oh, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor. The newspaper reported that I was only a negative vote last week, and so I've had a number of people ask me why I voted no, and I guess I just wanted to place that into the public record. I understand that we reached a conclusion that this ought to be adopted in all respects, but I opposed at that time, and I still oppose the idea of not meeting on a weekly basis. I think, from my perspective, I think it's my job to be here to vote on things if they come forward, and if the public needs a plat approved, I want to be present to do that, and I understand that the majority of this council feels differently, and so this is not a hill worth dying on, but I did want to make it clear why I was voting no.
Thank you, Councilman Ronan. We had a couple of people ask me about your dissenting vote, and that was what I conveyed to them as well.
Oh, thank you.
Based on our previous conversations, I thought, I think that many people here feel like, you know, we have an obligation to meet frequently, and I think that, you know, the deciding factor to me, you know, previous city manager Lynn Lander had always been kind of a proponent of two meetings, and brought to my attention that nearly every city in the entire state meets twice per month, and here we are, four times, so I guess that...
That way, Councilman Rux.
I'll be voting against this primarily just for the reason of not meeting every week. I've reached out to several people, especially those that have filed for community event permits and some other stuff like that, and I think that we are here to do the people's business, and if that means we do it every week, that is perfectly fine with me. And it all comes down to, do you want a half-hour meeting, or do you want an hour meeting, or a 45-minute meeting? But I think that to have this forum for the public to come to, should they have an issue, or should they want something, I think, to me, is important to allow those people to get a voice. So I, again, this is one of those things, you said, well, you voted last week, it was just first reading. It allows us a little more opportunity to seek input and basically get more ideas, should there be any. I know the three meeting a month was my idea, but it was, to me, better than two, but I think it is probably not as good as every week. So, that's the only thing I'm me voting against, I'm fine with everything else.
Councilman Rux, does anyone else have anything to add here before we take a vote? Carl, would you give me a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Ronan.
No.
Lunsman.
Yes.
Rife.
Yes.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
No.
Rux.
No.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we'll move along to the consent calendar. We've got two items for approval of routine city business. Someone put forward a motion to approve these two items?
Move to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
A motion from Councilman Rife and a second from Councilman Rux to approve the two items in our consent calendar. All in favor, would you please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion does carry. We will move to new business. We've got the hearing for a new retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota wine license for Catching Fireflies Boutique LLC at 601 Riverside Drive. Possible approval of a retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license for Catching Fireflies at that address.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Ronan and a second from Councilwoman Langer. Does anyone have any questions or comments as it relates to this hearing? Otherwise, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion does carry. Next, we've got the consideration of the K O Lee Aberdeen Public Library contract with Brown County for 2021. Possible approval of the contract will provide for the library services of the city in the Brown County from January through December 2021 for the amount of $12,000. Shirley, I see you are on the screen here. Why don't you tell us a little bit about the history of this thing and what we're looking to do?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, for those of you maybe who haven't been involved in this in the past, the county and the city have had an agreement for library service since 1969, and over the years, the amount has changed, but the agreement is for the county residents to use the city library without having to pay any individual fees, and the amount this year is $12,000, which it has been for many years. I believe it has stayed that way because the city also pays the county $12,000 for use of the museum, so we've kind of been going back and forth on that. Library Board has voted to continue the $12,000 for this year. We've talked about maybe getting rid of the fees, going both ways over the years. I know the council and the library board have, the board decided it might be a good idea maybe to wait till the spring, and maybe some of the council members in the library board and the county could discuss that, but they have voted to go forward this year, and so that's where we're at.
Thank you, Shirley.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion from Councilman Ronan and a second from Councilman Rux. So I wanted to run this by you here, Joe. Is the payment that was set from the fund, promotional fund for the county museum staying at $12,000 then for this year?
You know, off the top of my head, it might be down a little bit. I'm not sure if it made the same one. There was, potentially, Carl might look that up for us.
They started hitting buttons.
I feel like all the numbers got reduced just slightly, and I didn't know if that was going to change anyone's mind if this is essentially considered to be a bit of a swap.
Can I say something? I know as being on the library board for a number of years, that, to me, this almost seems like something that's just, I mean, we consider Aberdeen a regional library, a regional center, and to sit there and say that if you don't live in Brown County, you know, you can't use our library unless the county gives us money. I don't know if there's something that, like, again, next year, that could be worked on, if we could guarantee that the county will continue funding $12,000 to the museum from the promotion fund, and, you know, like I say, this, to me, is just, I mean, it's $12,000 out of how many millions of dollars of a budget, just so the people of the county, which most of them consider Aberdeen a hometown anyway, or their regional center of trade, you know, just, to me, it just seems like this is just nonsense.
I agree. I asked a couple of questions at the library board. Oftentimes, counties donating, or not donating, contributing to libraries is done by state statute, not by an agreement that if you give our museum something, we'll give your library something. I do think it's something to discuss over the interim before we get into next year's budget, but I think it's appropriate to do it at this point in time, and if it comes up as a discussion item, we'll do so.
Councilman Rife.
Shirley, could you just clarify something for me? If someone from Ipswich or Edmonds County comes to the library, are they paying a fee then to use the library?
Yes, they are.
And what is that fee?
They'd be either $40 a year, or they can do $12 a quarter, or $5 a month.
Thank you.
Do you have a lot of people doing that, Shirley?
We have quite a few pay cards, yes.
And is that strictly to use the space, or is that like if they want to rent books, or like, how would you know if somebody just walked in?
Well, they have to come up to the desk, and they'd have, if they'd want to check out books.
Okay.
We don't charge anybody to come in and use the library, or use the study rooms or anything, or use the books in the library. That's just if you want to take items out of the library.
Okay.
If I may, Carl, I just got a text from Councilman Remley, who asked to be invited into the meeting. Perhaps you want to say no, I don't know. Penalty for being tardy.
So the, essentially, we're, the county is covering for about 300 individual people at that $40 rate, and I would say, given that greater Brown County has about 12,000 or better residents, I think that they're getting a hack of a deal, and I think that it's well worth the money, and I would say that they'd have a hard time saying that it wasn't. We haven't yet gotten a motion. Would someone be...
I did make the motion.
You made the second.
Got a motion, Councilman Ronan, and a second. Councilman Rux, does anyone else have any questions or other comments to include? I see that Mark has joined us, too, so we'll do a roll call vote. Carl, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
I appreciate your silence.
Just waiting.
Motion does carry. Next, we've got in-terminal car rental concession airs at the airport. Possible approval to award in-terminal car rental concession agreement to Aberdeen Flying Service doing business as Hertz and Meyer &amp; Company doing business as Avis. Rich, are you here with us tonight?
Yes, I am, Mayor. So we had our airport board meeting on the, oh, when was that? 8th of October. We opened our bids on September 29th, and at the airport board meeting on the 20, or on the 8th of October, we discussed in, for the in-terminal, we received bids from Meyer &amp; Company doing business as Avis and Aberdeen Flying Service, who will be doing business as Hertz going forward. Both met the minimum requirements of the bid process, so we recommend approval for in-terminal.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Johnson and a second from Councilman Ronan. So, Rich, in looking this thing over, it looks like the one change that I could identify was that Hertz used to be operated by someone else.
Correct.
Otherwise, this is, remains as it was for the previous five-year period?
Right, we'll still have the same signs up. It'll be just, Mark Caven &amp; Company will be owning the Hertz franchise going forward.
Sounds good. Councilwoman Langer has a comment or question?
So will they, will Aberdeen Flying Company still operate budget as well in their current location, or will we lose that?
Aberdeen Flying Service off terminal at their FBO has Dollar Thrifty.
Oh, Dollar, sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. So they'll still continue that?
Correct.
Okay.
So long as you vote in the next, in the next... Any other questions?
Oh.
Comments? Carl, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the off-terminal car rental concession airs at the airport. Possible approval to award the off-terminal car rental concessions agreement to the Aberdeen Flying Service and Enterprise. Rich, are you still with us?
Yep, I'm still here. So, again, the same bid opening date and time, and same airport board meeting. We discussed the off-terminal agreements, and both of them offered the 10% concession, so staff recommends approval.
Sounds good, and, Rich, I guess first we'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
And I'll second it.
Got a motion, Councilman Johnson, and a second from Councilman Ronan. Sometime last fall or winter, a gentleman from Enterprise had come and expressed interest in a space within the airport itself. Did they post a bid for the in-terminal car rental agreement?
They did not.
Okay.
The information was sent to them, though. They had the opportunity.
Sounds good. Carl, would you give, no one else has anything to add?
A question.
Councilman Johnson.
Rich, has Enterprise clarified where their base of operation will be in Aberdeen?
Quest Aviation.
Okay.
That FBO.
Carl, would you give me a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Rich, thank you for joining us. Next, we've got...
Hey, I need to dismiss myself for another board meeting. Good night.
Yep, have a great night. We appreciate your involvement here. Next, we've got activities update from the Aberdeen Area Chamber of Commerce, and I see Lisa has joined us to tell us what those guys have been up to. So, make sure the microphone is on, and take it away.
Good evening, everyone. As I sit in these council meetings, I always think, people are changing the game all over the place with the things they do at these meetings, so that's great. People coming to get permission to do things and all kinds of fun stuff, so that's great. I'll give Carl a moment to get the PowerPoint fired up here, and... Great, thank you. So as I told you in June when I was here, that we were pretty quiet for the second quarter of the year, just pending the new brand, and we wanted to kind of save our resources for the rollout and what would come after that, so I'm going to kind of go through things that we've done since kind of the June timeframe with, by message, and then I'll kind of share with you exactly what we did and the audience that we were targeting. So, first of all, we rolled out the new brand, and we kind of had a general imaging, a Great Place to Live campaign that we were going through, and so we did some print stuff with, and this was just kind of to showcase the new brand and not anything more than that in particular, except just kind of highlighting Aberdeen as all the wonderful things going on here. So if you would go to number two, please, Carl. We started with some print, and we did a couple of issues of Aberdeen Magazine, and that was the Way to Go, Joe. We did a couple of issues of the Aberdeen Magazine, just as kind of a showcase for that, and then in the Aberdeen American News, we did the Living Life special section, and then also did the cover of the Progress Magazine, and that's the cover in page three as well, right there. So, kind of just wanted to really throw that out there in print. We also did some TV video on KSFY and KDLT. This is the, I know you guys saw this ad right after it was done, and Carl tells me there's no audio, so there's probably no really point in running it again, but, so if you wanted to skip past that, you can. We did that, sorry, that ad was in, on KSFY and KDLT as well as some cable. We did Twins, Golf, some like travel, TLC Discovery, and that sort of thing on cable. So then we did some digital, also with Midco, some banner ads, which there's up right there. Yep, so that, that link right there, you don't have to click on that, Carl, but it does, there is a motion with these, and that's what that link is. It just kind of goes to the page that has, there are several different sizes, but we had those going on quite a few pages on Midco. And then on Dakota News Now, we did targeted digital banner ads that were clicking through to visit aberdeenSD.com, June through August, and those were some of the ads that were running there, so. I do have some numbers. If anybody's interested in hearing some of those, I'd sure be happy to share them with you, so if at the end you want to hear some kind of some analytics or anything of any of these, just let me know. Sponsorship, oh, and I was going to tell you the audiences, too. So the message that we were just kind of the new brand and general imaging, we were kind of hitting all of the audiences that normally we are looking to, which is the locals, the day trippers, and then those who are looking to relocate here, and so they were running, like, especially in TV was running, kind of in the Sioux Falls and Pear markets as well, so we were kind of hitting the whole eastern half of the state. And on the banner ads were also just kind of more local as well, although, let's see. Yeah. So then we did a little bit of sponsorship with Kelo, where the Aberdeen logo is appearing at the end of the public service commercial that is running on Kelo, and then we are also sponsoring the Wings Dashboard and ICE logo inside the OD Ice Arena, and that's the dash, the new dashboard that went up this year. Social media video links to the Rightmove page, and this is targeting more of the relocators coming here to move for a job or just relocating for a better lifestyle. That is the landing, the first, above the fold, the first one is above the fold on the landing page, and the second one on the bottom is when you scroll down a little bit, what it shows, so just kind of giving you an idea of what that page looks like. We did have some pretty interesting statistics. I'm actually going to take a moment to go over with those just really quickly, because, like I said, that was really targeting more outside our area, and so the, the states that were hitting on this were in this order, 1 to 10. Kansas, Illinois, South Dakota, Washington, Minnesota, New York, 7 was not said, and I'm not sure what that means. Then we had California, Delaware, and New Jersey, so kind of an interesting mix of where we were getting hits on that Rightmove Landing page there that was going off the social media video. We did really do some targeted stuff in the Minneapolis area in July. It was kind of a small experiment. We spent $80, $80 just to kind of see what was going on, because, you know, that was kind of the time people had been really kind of locked down for a few months, and we were wondering if they were, things were starting to loosen up. We only hit 3,819 people, and nobody clicked through, so then we thought, well, it's probably not quite the right time yet, so now we think it is, though, we're going to try a different approach with what's called programmatic video, targeting Minneapolis, Chicago, Detroit, and that began last week, so I don't really know yet anything about what's happening with that. I can give you an update at our next time I'm here, but we were really kind of following Governor Noem's lead that our state is open, that sort of message with that, so it'll be kind of interesting to see what happens with that as we run that. And then we did a little billboard in Aberdeen and Jamestown, and those were, of course, again, local, just to showcase the, the new brand. Oh, yeah, no audio, so that's the Aberdeen billboard, the new brand, and then Jamestown, we did something a little bit different there. That was really kind of those day trippers come to Aberdeen and spend a little money. We wanted them to know that Storybook Land was open, and that was kind of when people were wondering if things were happening or not back early summer. And then we also had spent some time advertising Brown County Summer Fest and Sizzlin Summer Nights, just some of those bigger events that we were trying to get people to come to Aberdeen and spend their money here, to let them know that we were open and things were going on. Our next message was spend time in Aberdeen at events and shopping, which was, you know, kind of what that billboard in Jamestown started out as just a little bit of, we did a teaser with just the new brand, and then we went into that stuff. Radio for the spend time in Aberdeen, which is more of the day trippers and encouraging people locally to stay here instead of going out of town. We did radio in Aberdeen, Mowbridge, Watertown, and Jamestown, plus we did Smitty's baseball broadcast sponsorship. Digital, beginning just last month, we're doing DakotaNewsNow.com pre-roll video and banner ads across their website and news app, which clicks through to aberdeenSD.com now, so we'll have some statistics for that. We have, I have one, some statistics for September, but we'll have more later. And then we did some print with the Jamestown Sun. It was kind of one of those areas we targeted, as we know that people from up in that area come down to Aberdeen a lot, so we wanted to, again, let them know that we were open and doing things. And then we just did a little summer fun insert in the Bowdoin-Uricon newspapers as kind of over in that western side over there. The next message is safe dining, shopping, and entertainment, and this is for locals as well as day trippers. We did some TV. There were three different ads, safe dining, safe shopping, and safe entertainment, and this aired on cable TV as well as KSFY. That's the ad that Gail did. You won't be able to hear it, but I don't know, if you want to play it, Carl, at least you can see, kind of get the gist of it, maybe. Down at the bottom of the screen should have, this doesn't have, oh, right, way down in the lower left, yep. Very touchy. We're at work. We really focused on the safety measures that all of our businesses were taking. And there's that. So we've, we're just finishing up with that now, and we're moving on into the holiday season with, we're calling it Bi-Local by Aberdeen, and we're going to be pushing the Aberdeen Gift Card, local businesses, e-commerce sites, and vendors that are carrying the new community logo and flag merchandise. So that will be mostly for locals and day trippers. We're going to be doing radio in Aberdeen, Mowbridge, Watertown, Jamestown, and Oaks Markets. In Jamestown and Oaks, we traded them Aberdeen gift cards for the ads. So basically, essentially, what that will do is when people buy those cards, it'll be like on the radio station's online auction sites, so when people buy those gift cards, they're going to come to Aberdeen to spend them, which most, I'm sure everybody's going to be spending more than what they just purchased on a gift card, so that's a good way to get people to town to spend more money on top of what they would have. And then print, we're going to be doing some, this is going to be our, our holiday, the look that we've got going on. We're calling it Keep the Cheer Here, Shop in Store and Online at Our Local Businesses. That'll be in Aberdeen Magazine and the American News' Holiday Wish List Book. We just started this, so I know we'll be putting it on social media and some other things, so just kind of kicking that off. We also spent money on productions for the Wings Dashboard, graphic design for ads, the Dashboard and the ICE art. We spent money on producing the video. We do have a couple of videos that are being worked on right now, which I'm really excited about, because they're going to be Aberdeen from a dog's perspective, so they'll be kind of fun. And of course, we bought the jingle. Right now, we're paying a monthly fee to host the Rightmove Landing page, and also the, the site that hosts all the video archives of Aberdeen that have been taken the last couple of years, so anyone who wants to use those for marketing Aberdeen is welcome to go in and take those video files and use them. And we bought a few promotional items, some pens and journals and hand sanitizer and such this year, so. I will tell you that we just also started the work on the... So I will tell you that we just also started the work on the new Boulevard banners that will be going up next spring, and I'm really excited about those. They're gonna be a lot of fun. Any questions?
Where were the, the local digital ads directing people to? You said the ones from outside of our area went to an Icelanding page, encouraged people to move to Aberdeen. How about the ones that were run locally?
Yep, so earlier in the year, they were going to, like during the summer, they were going to visit aberdeenSD.com. And we just switched over after summers over to Aberdeen, just aberdeenSD.com, the community page.
Sure.
Yeah, the community website, yep.
Councilman Johnson, do you have a?
Yeah, I just wanted to commend you for your activity during second, third quarters. What an interesting time to market to people. I thought your ads were very attractive. I was noticing in the Jamestown Sun ad, maybe with that amount of space, you might consider including a coupon or something to actually be measurable and, and maybe even have an improved response. Something like a coupon that you use in the Aberdeen Parks and Rec brochure, where fifty cents off a train ride or something like that. I think that might be an interesting thing to try.
Yeah, I'd have to coordinate with Parks and Rec or maybe Casey.
Exactly.
To redeem those. Sure, absolutely, I'll make a note of that.
Oh.
Okay.
Ms. Langer.
Thank you. I just want to say how exciting it was to have the huge gift card promotion that you guys did. I'm not sure if that's been acknowledged, but it was a huge deal for businesses. And I constantly hear about it still, so I just want to thank the chamber for doing that. And also, just to commend you guys for the great advertising efforts, because I know the money that you get from the promotional fund, you guys use for all of this. And for the city to have to, to do marketing like what you've just put through in this presentation would create, I mean, we'd have to have an entire position on top of spending a huge amount of money. So I just want to make sure that you guys are thanked for all of your work, because I know you don't charge us for your time, so thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate that, appreciate the acknowledgement, and we enjoy doing it. It really is, you know, a really fun part of my day. And I, you know, I really do appreciate having the opportunity to do it. We like being the community cheerleaders, so it's a good, good mix, a good partnership.
Well, since this has gone rather quickly, if you had a few moments to tell us of some of the metrics that you were kind of teasing earlier, I'd be interested to hear.
Absolutely, yes. Get through some of this paper here. So going back to the, some of the stuff we did with Midco. We did, the display ads were just shy of ten thousand engagements. And we had the, let's see, the top geographic performers were Aberdeen, Gettysburg, Groton, and Eureka. So kind of getting that day tripper. And especially looking at like Gettysburg and Eureka, you know, they have the opportunity to go to Pier or Bismarck, so if we can lure them over here instead, that's really, and that's really one of the reasons behind what we do in Mowbridge too, because we know that they have the opportunity to go up to Bismarck instead of coming here. So of course, we want to try to get them over here instead. And then connected TV, there, there was a nine, combined ninety-six percent completion rate, which means when they started the video, they finished, ninety-six percent of it finished it to a hundred percent. So I don't really know industry-wide how that compares, but I have the word "great" behind here. That came from my rep from Midco, so. There were nine hundred ads released daily approximately, and they were kind of top performing in the same geographic areas. And so that connected TV is kind of like your, the sticks that you put into your TV. So it's mostly in the rural areas, but we really kind of had some geographic boxes that we had them specifically target, which is kind of one of the nice things with some of these digital things that we're doing, that we can just kind of set some of those standards. We can set geographic areas, we can set, you know, whether we want age groups or whether we want, you know, whatever they're looking for, if they're searching online for things, we can make those ads hit when they're doing certain searches, like if they're searching vacation or shopping, you know, we can make them hit. So I don't personally do all that stuff, but that's why we have reps in our, with our partners to do those things. So Dakota News Now, we, we didn't, I did get some information from them too, and I did have some clarification, because I wasn't, there are a lot of numbers here, but, so like June, we had a hundred and eight thousand plus total impressions from the banner ads. The total clicks was a hundred and thirty-nine, which is point one-three percent. So, you know, I asked, what, what is kind of the standard, or does, how does that fare? And really, point one-five to point two is what they're looking for. So that was a little bit under. In July, we did better with the, there weren't as many impressions, only eighty-five thousand, but the clicks were a hundred and eighty-one, so point two-one percent clicks. And these travel, keywords that we used were like travel and vacation. Those were the ones that were going through to visit aberdeenSD.com at the time. So the top geographic locations that we're looking, there were Sioux Falls, Rapid City, and Aberdeen, and Watertown. We had, had a lot in those. August went down more, fifty-two thousand impressions, only forty-six clicks. So kind of, summer kind of started strong there, but then went down at the end of the summer. But, you know, I think with school starting and seems like just, August is kind of like a half a month for vacations and things like that, so. And then when we switched over to, with Dakota News Now, to do, to go on to their website banner ads instead of the, the other targeted marketing, in September, there were almost fifty-eight thousand impressions with seventy-two clicks, and the click-through rate was point one-two percent. So just a little bit below what they kind of expect. So I just need to work with them probably a little bit to figure out what we can do a little bit differently to get more people to take action on that. Let's see, yeah, I guess I shared with you the analytics on, the locations on the Rightmove Landing page, and so I'll share with you the users on that. So there were three hundred and twenty-seven users from between July first and October eighteenth, which was yesterday. We had some kind of spikes around the beginning of September, like the first week, about the third week of September, then after October, the, since October first, we've had some really big spikes in the, the hits on there, so. You know, I don't, I think we maybe attribute to that to more, we hear more people, we actually have more people calling us from all over the country too, wondering about moving here. Ohio and Illinois and Michigan and different locations. So I don't know if it's that they're kind of finally getting fed up with their lockdowns and, you know, they're just kind of looking for a different place to go. So we're just trying to be there for them and maybe get in front of them and see if it's a good fit for them to move to Aberdeen. Of course, the first question they always ask is, what are your winters like?
They're great.
Yeah, we always say.
Didn't just smell today.
Not so bad.
Councilman Rux has a, has a question.
Sorry, as, as I sit here, you know, and think, certain things just sort of pop in my head. So let's say you, you say you do a lot of, or do some advertising in Jamestown. What is a, what is a draw you focus on, considering that someone in Jamestown can get to Bismarck and Fargo probably much easier than coming to Aberdeen?
They can, and that's why we, and you know, it's not necessarily, so when you think of Aberdeen, when people are advertising in Aberdeen, they're not only advertising for Aberdeen, they're advertising around Aberdeen. And that's really a lot of what we're trying to do in Jamestown too, because, you know, you've got people from Edgley and Oaks and Ashley, and you know, some of those smaller towns around. So it's not just Jamestown, but it's those smaller towns too that we're trying to pull them here to Aberdeen. So, yeah, yeah, we are competing with Bismarck and Fargo. And just to kind of remind them that they're here, that we're here, we have cool things like Storybook Land and events, and we want them to come down here and spend their money. And, you know, I, I have chats with their, the radio reps up there, and they say they, they do know people come down here, so we want to keep us, you know, keep our name, our, our city just in the kind of the tops of their heads as they're deciding where they're gonna go spend money.
And, and like I say, I think Storybook Land is a draw. I mean, it's, it's free, you just have to pay for rides, but what type of metrics would I have to say that your advertising in Jamestown was worthwhile? I think that's kind of getting to Alan's point, you know, if we had a, a coupon or, or something, you know, are these people coming from here? Because, you know, I, I spend a lot of time in Mowbridge. Unless it's a doctor's appointment or Storybook Land, they're going to Bismarck. You know, and, and that's just, they're saying, it's easier for them to get to Bismarck than it is to get to Aberdeen. And so like I say, is, you know, with that focus, you know, like you say, you focus on the events, you focus on Storybook Land. Could it be maybe more focus spent done, you know, like I say, you know, I can get a shopper for, for someone for a couple of days. Can I get a resident that lives here for ten years? What more, what is more money in my hand in the long term? And I'm glad to hear that you're getting things about relocations, because that's how we grow our community. But maybe could, maybe some more marketing be thrown into, hey, come live in Aberdeen? And could we market even further out than, than your typical ninety mile radius or whatever you try and focus on? Because like you say, this, the promotion fund, I ran the numbers a few years ago, and seventy-five percent of that is residents. You want to grow that fund, you, you can grow it better by getting people to move here and live here.
Yeah, absolutely agreed, yeah, because they're, they're the ones that are eating out more and, you know, spending more money in the restaurants and bars especially, so. Getting back to one statement you said. Oh, so the, the first ad we did right after the initial, you know, new brand, that was kind of the point of that, is like Aberdeen is a great place to live. And I know we're gonna get back to that eventually, probably after the first of the year, after we remind them that this is a great place to come and shop, kind of a local place. But yeah, we, you know, normally we spend some time on the shop, eat, stay, and play every year, and so kind of in the back of my head, I was thinking we needed to get back to that after the first of the year, and, you know, kind of put some of those things out there that not only is this a great place to shop, but it's, you know, it's clean and it's safe. And that was kind of the point of some of those last videos we did with the safe dining, safe, you know, that it's a safe place, so. Yeah, so and, you know, normally we try to stay within that hundred miles, just because the CBB is generally outside that zone. But, you know, if y'all would like me to, to see me spend a little bit more time outside that hundred miles, I certainly, you know, could certainly look at that.
I, I think you're both trying to capture visitors. Just you're capturing in the ninety miles, one is trying to capture out a hundred. What I'm saying is, I don't know if we have a organization that's solely focused on, how can we get from twenty-eight thousand people to thirty-two thousand people, you know? Or, or hey, you know, people want to relocate here, you know, what type, can we, you know, what type of resources do we have that can throw their way? And not saying that should be the sole focus, because I think, you know, getting those people from Redfield, you know, they do have a choice, do we go to Huron or do we go to Aberdeen? Same with Webster, do they go to Watertown or do they go to Aberdeen? And, and being able to offer more in that area is probably, you know, where money needs to be spent. Also, just remind them of the things that are happening here, especially for events. But like I say, the relocation thing is, you know, should we be focusing on that, especially as people are looking at, especially as, you know, people now may, you know, certain, many businesses have said, hey, you know, you can work anywhere you want, and you can work remotely. I think that there's opportunities, and the winners are, you know, you might have a great one one year, you might have a bad one the next year, you know? Hopefully, you get them on a good year, so.
Yeah, we try not to let them, let that scare them.
Thank you very much for joining us tonight, Lisa.
Thank you.
Good presentation. Next, we've got the approval of the bill list for October nineteenth. Looks like there's just one single item on here tonight. I would ask, entertain a motion to pay that, that single bill.
With approval. Second.
Motion from Councilman Rux and a second from Councilman Lunsman. Carl, would you give me a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Epstein.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman.
Aye, motion does carry next. The city manager's report, Mr. Gah, what have you got for us here this evening?
Well, I just have one, one thing I really didn't even want to talk about it. I was gonna try and wait another week, and then we woke up this morning and there were snowflakes in the air, so. The Public Works Department's been working on updating snow removal plans. Most of the snow removal equipment is here and ready, so even if we're not quite ready, they're, they're getting there. But I just wanted to remind folks that we'll see a snow come pretty quickly, and then the snow removal operations will start pretty quickly after that. So starting to get used to not parking on the streets, making sure we have everything kind of put away and make it easier is important. And also, just to remind you that when we do implement our snow removal, we have a lot of media, both in radio, TV, social media, newspapers. Our updated routes will be out, I think, this weekend in the Aberdeen newspaper. So there are opportunities, as well as on our website. We have a notify me app, that if you go to our website down at the bottom, you'll see that opportunity to, lots of options there. And if you wanted to hear updates on snow removal, you could get those either in text or email form. So just reminding folks, that's how we communicate when snow removal happens, and just encouraging everybody to be ready, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Rux?
I know I've gotten numerous emails, especially on some things like called a mask mandate. I know Brookings has instituted one. I've gotten them for and against, and I'm not asking for any specific action here tonight. But Ron, under, would the city, under the current authority, have the power to issue a mask mandate?
Councilman Rux, yes, the short answer is. If you recall, when we initially were dealing with this issue back in March, I had prepared for the council a spreadsheet, kind of a flow chart, I guess I'll say, for public health emergency, and kind of on the top of the list as far as city council action was the ability and the authority to do what may be necessary or expedient for the promotion of health or the suppression of disease. That's a statute that we have. Remind the council that, as we sit here today, the state of South Dakota is under a public health emergency as declared by Governor Noem, that that therefore forms the basis for any action on the part of this council or councils across the state wishing to take public health action. If you can do so in an emergency, that's fine, or in an ordinance, it's fine. And you could do so as an emergency ordinance, like we were doing there for a while. You can also do it as a resolution. But this council, as a home rural municipality, does have the authority today. If it chose to take some action regarding a mask mandate, it could do so.
I don't know if our two new council members got that same flow chart that probably we got last year. Am I correct?
I did not.
Okay.
Councilwoman Langer, you have something to add?
I do. As part of my job, and I've responded to several emails on the mask mandate, I work with a large area in northeast South Dakota, Brookings being one of those territories, or one in my territory. I will say, I have talked to several of the business owners in Brookings, and it's been incredibly hard for them to enforce the mandate. It has nothing to do with the fact that a mask, masks shouldn't be worn, they absolutely should be. I know Mayor Yu signed on to something encouraging people when they can't social distance to wear masks. I believe Joe Yu sent out an email today to the city asking them to wear masks. And, and so I would like to encourage the city of Aberdeen, Brown County, everybody to wear masks, because I do know, talking to those businesses in Brookings, it's very difficult to mandate masks for business owners, for their employees, for everybody involved, for the police to mandate them. It's been a difficult process, and I'm not talking to just regular people. I'm talking to several different factors in Brookings. So I just want to make sure that I make that point and encourage people in Aberdeen to do that, because it's, it's the best way to stop the spread.
Councilman Ronain, you have something to add?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, actually, I wanted to commend you. I appreciated the leadership that you, that you showed in signing the letter with many of the mayors throughout the state of South Dakota, encouraging citizens throughout the state to, to do the things that we've been told for months that we need to do. We have substantial community spread in our community and in our state. What we are doing right now is not working, as we're seeing hospital, hospitalizations increase. We have a positivity rate over twenty percent. What I would encourage, and what I would ask the mayor, because he is really the face of this council, is can we lead by example? Rather than just lip service, can we lead by example? Can we, as a city council, come to our meetings with masks? Can we be wearing our masks in public? Can we encourage our, and I, and I know I saw Joe's memo earlier today. I know that we are now encouraging our, our city employees, for their safety, to wear masks. I would go, go further than, than my friend Councilwoman Langer, and ask that, that we do these things, that we encourage the city to, to order, as Joe has started doing, that our employees... our employees show respect for each other, for members of our community, by at least during business hours, adhering to the mask requirements.
Well, thank you for the recognition, Councilman Ronan. I was happy to sign that letter, because I believe that the spirit of that letter was to remind people that health is ultimately their personal responsibility. I've said that from the very beginning, and I think that that's been proven, as a majority of governmental actions have fallen flat or made the situation worse rather than better. Cases have risen, thankfully, so have tests, and that has been inconsistently gathered, so I think that that's a poor way to gauge this, but as Councilman Ronan mentioned, hospitalizations have also risen. Thankfully, our hospitals have both said they can handle the cases, but I would like to also encourage people to be hygienic, responsible, and respectful, and to follow the guidelines that is appropriate to their situation. And with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn this wonderful meeting.
Moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Ronan and a second from Councilman Johnson. Since we have someone remote on the phone, I will have the city manager, Eric, I'll have Carl give us a final roll call vote of the evening here, please.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lundman.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman.
Aye, motion does carry. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much. [laughter] You guys have some people probably waiting next for you.